I'm calling to order the Monday, April 1st, 2019 Planning Commission. Who's taking role over there? Can we take the role?
Yes.
Are that's a you?
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Akita?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Krasner?
Here.
Mr. Wodisca?
Yeah, here.
Mr. Rankin?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Here.
Mr. Prunzez?
Here.
Ms. Teetz is absent. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Can I get a motion to adopt this evening's agenda?
So move.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. All right, terrific. There are no speakers this evening. Have we received any petitions for items not on this evening's agenda?
We have not.
Okay. Moving on. Action 6A, a motion of appreciation for Ms. G. Deborah G.
Commissioners, thank you. On the dais tonight was a hard copy of a draft motion of appreciation for your consideration. As we discussed at the last meeting, Deborah G., who has served with the city, served the community for 30 years as a city employee, has established a retirement date. This Friday will be her last day as a city employee. The draft motion is there to honor her for her service to the community, and it lays out many of her compliment. It highlights several of her accomplishments during her long tenure. Interestingly enough, it goes all the way back to her starting with the Economic Development Office, which used to be part of the Planning Shop and is now linked to the Planning Shop once again. So things have come full circle since 1988. For those who haven't received the invite, there is a citywide as well as a commission-wide event this Friday at the temporary City Hall at 400 North Washington for any who are able to attend.
I have received the invite.
Hi, party.
No, I think it's in the middle of the day.
In the middle of the day? Oh.
Mm-hmm. So what, while I certainly support this, what action do we need to do just to, we're going to take a vote to approve it or?
Yeah, like any other motion before the commission.
Okay. We have spoken about Deborah a number of times, certainly when we heard this announcement. Does anybody like to say anything else or make some comments prior to a motion, which I hope to entertain gladly?
I so appreciate her patience with all of us, both planning staff. I don't know if she got to you on that end, but she was always so patient with us and everything, and so gracious. Of course, I've done her for a long, long, long while, and she's just a very, very wonderful person.
I can say she was certainly very patient with me. When I signed on with the city, she'd already been here 25 years, and so after every phone call of some resident calling me, I would try to get as much information as I could, and then I would hang up, and then I would say, "Deborah." I would lean back in my chair, and we could see each other, and I would say, "Who is this person and why are they so angry at me?" And she would explain the history of what this person had gone through and how they'd been shuffled from office to office for a decade, and I could understand. I'd be pretty frustrated when I finally got someone on the phone, too. So the second time the person called, I was usually much better able to understand where they were coming from. So her expertise and her knowledge and familiarity with the city and the folks who make it what it is will certainly be missed on staff. It's hard to replace 30 years of experience with the community, and hopefully we have a few folks that will stick around that long. And build up the same level of familiarity and rapport that she did.
Yeah, she has been associated with the Planning Commission since I joined 11 years ago. She will definitely, her presence will be missed. She was really a patient with me as well and provided anything I needed to source the conduit of communication for most of those years. Went through various cycles of taking the minutes from every single word to summary level to back to every single word to back to some modifications and each time sort of adjusting to our whims. So she was really a wonderful resource on any question I ever had, and I'm hoping her that she has a happy retirement. She was a valuable resource for the city. I thought she was also involved with the Historic Commission, and it was not on here, so I didn't know if, I thought she was liaison with the Planning Commission on that, so I wanted to make sure that was.
And she could answer any questions that we had.
She knew the rules.
Yeah.
Yeah, she was the staff liaison to both the Historical Commission and the Historic Architecture Review Board.
So perhaps we should add those. That was a vital role she served, at least with the Planning Commission, for sure. Well, if no one has anything else to add, with maybe that small adjustment about the historical, the two historical liaison responsibilities, I would happily entertain a motion for recognizing Ms. Deborah G.
I move that we adopt this resolution in honor of Deborah G. for all the work she has done and her more than 30 years with the City of Falls Church.
Looks like 31 to the day, maybe.
I gladly second that.
Okay, wonderful. Let's take a roll call to vote on that.
Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
Mr. Wodisca?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Mr. Prunzez?
Yes.
Thank you.
Appropriately unanimous. All right, the next item is Action 6B, the West Falls Church S.E. This is the public hearing and action. Let's begin with a staff report.
Sure. I'll turn it over to you in just a minute. So Commissioners, before you for action tonight is a proposed motion. It's a recommendation to council on the special exception entitlement application for the 10-acre West Falls Church development. In terms of the structure of the motion, before I turn this over to Ms. Ruzi for the staff report, I just want to remind the group of the process. This is a two-step application process. First, the S.E., followed by the special exception site plan, S.E.S.P. Of course, there will be more time for detailed review at the S.E.S.P., and so your, the draft motion here breaks that out, that the Planning Commission staff is suggesting several recommendations at the S.E. phase. There will be an amended application prior to council's action. Other items that are more detailed in nature and can be better responded to during the special exception site plan, those are laid out in the second part of the motion, which is the reason for the breakdown between recommendations at S.E., recommendations at site plan. And of course, there will be other items that come up during site plan, but these are things that have come up now as part of this process, and staff just wants to make it clear that there are some things that are appropriate to tackle now versus others later. With that, I want to turn it over to Ms. Ruzi, who is the lead staffer for the application.
Good evening. We went into some background last, during the work session last week, so I won't go too much into it, but I'll start with the site description. The subject site located at the intersection of Leesburg Pike and Haycock Road represents approximately 10.3 acres of the current George Mason High School campus. This is part of the property acquired by the city through the 2013 boundary adjustment agreement with Fairfax County. Surrounding land uses include the Virginia Tech and UVA Joint Campus, the West Falls Church Metro Station, the Weston Shopping Center, and commercial and residential uses. The area is surrounded on three sides by Fairfax County. Between March and November 2018, the city engaged in a RFP process in which the development team of Falls Church Gateway Partners made up of VYA, Pion Hoffman, and Regency was chosen. The city authorized since then the execution of an interim agreement with a selected developer on November 19, 2018. The city subsequently amended the agreement on February 11, 2019. The interim agreement includes material terms, which includes limits on overall and unit square footages for residential uses and minimums and ranges on square footages and types of commercial uses. In terms of review and approval process, Mr. Stoddard did mention briefly, so I'll just kind of add on to that. The proposed development is being processed under the newly created two-step process. The first step is the special exception entitlement, which we are currently in, to determine the layout, heights, and general uses. And the second step is a special exception site plan, which will function as any other special exception and site plan approved under zoning ordinance and will establish final design. If approved by City Council, the special exception entitlement will govern all uses on the site and the height, location, uses, transportation, utilities, and infrastructure to be allowed under special exception site plans approved for the property. On February 25th, council referred the application for the mixed-use development to boards and commissions, and as part of that referral process, the Planning Commission tonight is asked to consider a recommendation to the City Council on the proposed development. Staff reviewed, staff has reviewed the first submission, and detailed staff comments are provided in the report before you. To summarize, staff identified several items for further refinement, both during the special exception entitlement process and the site plan process. These items are included in the proposed motion for the Planning Commission. They include hotel massing and height at the school plaza, active street frontage at Haycock and Leesburg Pike, place-making and amenity plan, and further refinement of the phasing plan to include timing and parking by phase. A revised submission in response to these comments, as well as comments from council and boards and commissions, will be submitted prior to the public hearing and final consideration by council on May 13. In addition, a first draft of voluntary concessions was submitted on March 16 and is currently under staff review. Finally, based on staff review, the proposed project generally is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and substantially achieves the goals of the Special Revitalization District for Education and Economic Development. Therefore, staff recommends Planning Commission adopt the proposed motion and provide a positive recommendation to City Council. In terms of schedule, a joint work session, City Council work session with Planning Commission and EDA to discuss boards and commission comments, staff comments, and the draft VCs is scheduled for April 8. A second City Council work session is then scheduled for May 16, and the final hearing, as I just mentioned, is scheduled for May 13. That concludes the staff report. Don't know if the developer has any presentation tonight.
No, I don't have a presentation. Just wanted to thank all of you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Yeah, otherwise, staff is happy to answer any questions that we have.
Yeah, I think that, if I understand, the presentation is unchanged since it went through the six special meetings to reach out to all of the boards and commissions within the last several weeks. I think there was also a separate work session with the Planning Commission at its last meeting, and so this session was intended as a question and answer with the Planning Commission in case there were any follow-on questions after those presentations.
What's happening on the 8th?
I apologize for that. I did not get the word out to you all last week. There is a, there's, the intent is to have a joint work session of the City Council, the Planning Commission, and the Economic Development Authority, the EDA, at the April 8 session, which is next Monday. That will be, I think the amended application is either going to come in before then or around that time.
After that.
After that.
The 19th.
And maybe I'll let Carly speak to the.
The primary purpose for the work session next week will be to talk about comments that have been received from staff, from board and commission comments, your recommendation and any comments, the comprehensive agreement, kind of the outline of what we have right now, and then also proposed voluntary concessions.
Is there a presentation at that point as well, or this is just, again, more Q and A?
No, no. Well, I would assume you would probably present about staff comments you received to date, and then we would be answering any questions.
Our recommendation to City Council. I think that's going to be proposed.
So with the idea on the 8th date to discuss the voluntary concessions?
Yes.
Okay. But it's a work session setting.
Correct.
Well, let me turn it over to the commission here on this relatively new project. If does anybody have any questions they would like to ask of the applicant? Yeah, go for it. Now's the time.
Do you have some questions? Yeah. Most of these are from Mr. Goldman. There was some discussion, I think it was in the voluntary concessions, but having to do with the certification and it was LEED and equivalent. I was just wondering, was there any question, you plan to use LEED certification, right? Or is there some equivalent that you had in mind, or was that just a carryover from our Founder's Row boilerplate that got included?
Yeah, so we haven't 100% decided exactly which program we'd be using, which is why that was, language was still in there from, and it was from previous. Most of it, certainly LEED ND will be LEED, the Office will certainly be LEED. There was a question on the low-rise wood frame residential, whether it be LEED or another equivalent, so we're still working through that.
You made a reference to something?
You know what? We can get you that information. We have a member of our team is our sustainability person. We've met with Laura, so she's kind of spearheading that whole process for us and trying to figure out what's the right way to go.
We ran into some issues with the U.S. Green Building Standard on the Founder's Row, not so much on the residential. It applied pretty much across the board, just like LEED does, but the carryover to commercial, it was like a big gap there. We kind of said, oops, going forward, really, really, when there's commercial involved, you know, we kind of really prefer to stay with LEED, so, but residential, yeah, that's what means. So we'll be interested to hear what you have to say on that going forward. We had put the question out about the effect of the shadow study on the garage. I was just wondering if you had any, any results from that inquiry.
You know, we, Tordy Gallus is working on it. They have not gotten it to me yet. I apologize, but I can, I can share it before the work session next Monday, if that's helpful, get it to you in the next few days.
Yeah, I think the idea was to find out what the effect would be.
Right.
Expected there'll be some.
Yeah. Oh, sorry, sorry. Are you talking about the shadow study in general or the one specifically to the solar on the roof?
On the garage.
Yeah, sorry. Separate issue. So, yeah, so we, we have the contact name and the person at.
Sun Tribe.
Sun Tribe. We actually intended to reach out to them, didn't get in touch with them, and so we'll continue that tomorrow. We'll make sure we get them this week.
And since I'm not so familiar, they can do an analysis and say, you'll have this effective rate because of the shadows.
Yep.
Through the year.
Yeah, based upon the shadows, they can determine how many hours of the day the solar will get direct sunlight, and then that helps them.
They can actually calculate what the reduction in efficiency is to any system that would be put up there.
And for all these shadow study questions that come up, can you guys always make it clear if it is at which heights, because there is some ability for these things to be higher?
Yes.
Let's see. I'm just looking at the recommended staff motion for us, and there was several elements in there, and I'm just wondering what your reaction might be to a couple of these elements in ground floor uses to activate the Haycock Road and Leesburg Pike furnitures. I assume that means just to have more of a retail presence on those stories. Is that an issue? Is that something that you anticipate would be included when you get to probably the site plan stage?
Yeah, so at the site plan stage, both at Haycock and Seven, we don't know exactly what we'll have yet, so there's one option we're looking at where the grocery entrance could be on that side versus at the common side.
Right.
There's one grocer we're talking to that would rather have their entrance on commons, in which case the other corner would be something different. The idea is for it to be active, whether it's a residential active space or a retail space. I don't think we've figured that out yet.
And visible on an outward basis. I think the concern was, kind of looking at Mosaic and over there, and it seemed to be more of an inward focus, and they're saying, well, we can learn from that and make sure there's some activity going on on the outside.
100% agree. Agreed.
Okay. Place-making and amenity plan, as I recall, or was a date that you had for submitting?
Yeah, so I can share a draft of that. Speed used you, too, but it's the last version we saw. So there will be some changes made to this, but the, if you want to pull it up, I, I hope to get it out last Friday. We have some final changes we need to make to it, but I did bring the draft with us so that you can at least see where we're headed.
Yeah.
And I can share that with you right now, and then we will get more of this out from the next few days. But the concept, if you want, I can present it right now for five minutes. Is that good?
Yeah, please.
Actually, I mean, what we have in here is very generic, and I just want to make sure that if we include, if we recommend that these things be included in our comments, that it's not going to create any heartburn.
Oh, yeah.
Something, you know, that you're not expecting or anticipating that you would respond to.
No, not at all.
Okay. I think that's all I got.
Yeah, if it's five minutes, sure. So this is, it's a, this is a six-sheet PDF. There'll be another sheet added, and it's very much taken from what we did at Pike and Rose. And so as we flip through, if you just go to the next sheet, in this case, unlike in Montgomery County, in this case, the city has specific street standards for Seven and Haycock, and so there is an added sheet here that talks about the streetscape of Route Seven and Haycock versus the rest of the project. And so what you're seeing here is under paving, landscape, and street furniture. It walks through the types of materials, imagery of what those materials would look like. In the landscape, for example, it asks that we can do three trees in a pit versus one, so we can get more landscaping along Route Seven as a buffer versus having the smaller standard pits that you're seeing in the bottom left picture. And then obviously on the right, most of the street furniture is the city standard. We've added the additional kind of cafe-type seating, so there might be additional seating, but we wouldn't take away the city standard benches or bike racks or anything that the city would expect to see along Route Seven and Haycock. The next sheet goes into, I'm sorry, and as we get to S.E. site plan, this would be amended to actually proffer specific numbers of items. So the benches, instead of just showing a picture, would say, there will be, you know, eight benches on the front edge of Leesburg Pike or whatever. So that's, that's at the stage where that would happen. It might not place them exactly in a safe site plan, but it would say that they would be there, and that gives us the flexibility to put them in appropriate places once we know who the retailers are. The next one is Street A and Street B. Sorry, go back one, sorry. So in this one, you'll see the landscaping is a little bit more lush, but these are the side streets, the kind of alley streets, not the main commons, and so the materials are similar to what is the same street furniture from what we have on the city streets. The sidewalks are a mixture of concrete and brick in this case. The next image gets into more detail, which is the commons, so this is the more fun and active space, and so on the far left, this idea of hardscape and paving and, you can see, actually, you know what? We need to add green in there. There is a, I think there's a separate area that has landscape for the commons. You can see the middle column goes through seating types and all these different types of items, and then shade on the right talks about trees and trellises, canopies, and umbrellas. There'll be a section added here for cafe zone umbrellas as well as canopies. It'll be in addition to what you're seeing there. And so, once again, here it's generic, gives you a flavor. At S.E. site plan, this will get more detailed and get into actual numbers of items that you would expect to see on the site, and to the extent we've started selecting actual seating and actual artwork, you'd start seeing that in the S.E. site plan level. The next one is the, oh, yeah, so on the far left, you can see the landscaping there. I knew we had landscaping and greens. So you're seeing kind of flower pots, and you're seeing kind of, you know, the black-eyed Susans, which is a local flower, kind of these abundant tree pins, tree areas with green kind of overflowing. So you're starting to see the landscape on the far left. Public art, there'll be a second section for public art that we're adding. That's one of the reasons this is a draft. I just want more information there, including art on the buildings. The far right is fountains, and then the next sheet is, bless you. Thank you. Lighting as well. So, so the final version of this would be something like this, essentially, but with two or three more added sections that we're working on. And then, but as you can see, it's fairly generic, and it gives flavor and feeling of what you'd expect to see. Once we get into really studying this over the summer, we'll refine this, and when we come in with our S.E. site plan, this will be before you as a more detailed document, and we'll be able to, you know, literally look at images and pictures and make sure that we're generally feeling the same way about items. And to the extent we have selected items, we'll include them, and then we would, what we would recommend is that quarterly, we meet with staff to go through updates on street furniture selection, are things that are, that we may not know exactly what piece we're selecting when we get S.E. site plan approval, but will, you know, ultimately purchase at some point along the way.
Okay, great. Do we have any other questions?
Please. Just right there, you mentioned a combination of brick and cement. There was reading through a lot of the different remarks and questions from other boards and commissions. It was, one was whether there's going to be brick crosswalks or really different pavement for the crosswalks. And I will say that the crosswalks over at Mosaic worked really, really, really well. They, you know, people just stopped.
Bless you.
But also, there was a concern not only of the corner of Haycock and Leesburg, but also to make sure the entrance is on off Seven is really gateway entrance, too. So you almost have two gateways, and then you also have the visibility for acknowledging the schools over on the garage. So you've got a lot going on there. Also, the whole thing, there's mentioned and putting the speed limit at 20. And then I really like the fact that you made in the voluntary concessions to make sure that all the utility structure that has to be on top of the building is located in one spot so that you can add solar panels to it, which is very good. Just, again, that shade study is very important for that.
Yeah, I'm sorry I didn't have that in time.
Where you ever put either, you know, location of it. Also, in a little side conversation that Tim Stevens and I, you have, just perhaps exploring any other way of maybe tying into just geothermal on some parts of the, of the, maybe the buildings that are contiguous to the schools, sort of be right there. It might be, you know, a good thing for your development, and certainly would be another tie-in for some a lot of good publicity. Right. For not only the city, but your company and that development and everything like that. Also, there was a question as to whether all the cafes would have the same type of division. You know, you had two setups, one right in front and one off to the curb. Right. And there was a comment made that perhaps it'd be good to have a variety. Do the restaurants get to choose that?
That's a good question. So what we typically do, or what I would recommend, is we will have a standard likely to push the restaurant cafes outboard up against the parked cars, because that's the space that the restaurants will likely fight against, because they typically want it up against their storefront. And so we will typically fight for that, and then if there's some, you know, one or two great restaurants that, where we really feel like there's a reason to have it up against their storefront, you know, whether they're doing a bar that ends up bleeding outside onto the sidewalk.
Right, right.
Then we'll, then we'll change it for those specific restaurants. Those are often at corners where you want to do that, so that the street corner area where pedestrians are makes more sense.
And those are very, very.
Right. But if you don't.
Popular.
Federal Realty finds this in a lot of their projects. If you don't force the issue, by nature, the restaurant's going to say, eh, I just want it up against my storefront. It's more controlled, and then you end up not getting what you really want. So the restaurant, the standards that we have to have, that we communicate with our tenants, will be the opposite, and then we only give in what we need to.
And, thank you. And then, you know, all this recommendations from staff are all really good. The hotel massing, and that came from the school board, too, and I think that's excellent. And definitely considerable traffic signal up the school road on Mustang Way.
Mustang Alley.
Mustang Alley. Of course, I want my hoof print down, but that's okay. Mustang.
That could be cute if the sidewalk crossings are.
They do that down in the ass. You know, that's my thing. But anyway, be that as it may. But, yeah, you know, there were a lot of, there were a lot of questions that probably are left unanswered from boards and commissions since their remarks just came in, and I didn't see any direct answers to a lot of those. Do you ever plan on answering those perhaps next Monday on the 8?
Well, so it's, there's a lot of questions. It'll be, yeah, it'll be more than that. So on April 19th, when we resubmit our S.E. application, it will include an answer to every single board and commission question. A lot of the questions we've gotten so far actually do either overlap with questions we've gotten from staff already, which is good, or from you, or they're questions that are going to be answered at S.E. site plan. So it actually works out relatively well. There were very few where it was like, all of a sudden, no, we haven't thought about that yet. So I think we're in pretty good shape, but on April 19th, we'll submit, there'll be a letter that will be part of the application. That will be continued answers to everything from the staff report, as well as boards and commissions.
Good, because I'd hate to have them go to all that effort of meeting and then not have any response to.
Agreed.
What they, because of the time.
Yep.
You know, because we're so crunched in time. So that would be really, really good. Great, I think, you know, again, thank you so much for all the meetings, and thank you to staff, because that was a good job to pull off and everything like that. So it, there's, by the way, there are also some other connection problems with pedestrian and bicycle, cycle, the cycle areas, just the connections and crossovers and things like that.
Right.
So there still needs to be some things looking along that line.
Yep.
That were pointed out in a lot of the different comments along the way, but thank you again.
Thank you.
Rob?
I also think it's a great project. It's the best chance we have for a real reasonably significant smart growth project. The one thing that I'm glad to see the parking review comments, I guess Paul was from staff, that's a staff consultant, and she walked through the different uses and kind of where this project falls short regionally compared, just compared to other projects in the area. And so it was interesting to see that, to see, you know, kind of how this may or may not be taking advantage of the location, you know, here at the train station. I was, though, happy to see, though, so we'll have a chance to review this again in later phases. So I hope you thought a little more about that just quickly.
Okay.
How that might change in later phases. And especially then, what the consultant talked about, the quote of a very strong TDM plan.
Yeah.
Do you have ideas what a TDM plan looked like, very strong?
That's a very strong one. Yeah, I'm actually now, I don't know that I read the parking.
So Susan Bell.
Susan Bell.
Oh, I don't know if I've seen it. Was it in the?
It's one of the attachments.
It was sent after, just that comments.
Oh, maybe I didn't see it yet, I'm sorry. So I have not maybe read that one yet.
Somewhat different than your.
But I would love to see what the analysis is and how it compares and where we fall short. My assumption would be that we, she probably assumes we're higher on office parking than typical. Okay.
Well, she took the points out of location, where it is next to Metro, talks about the hotel being lower.
Right.
And prepares a two thousand existing city ratio, but again, textually weird.
Oh, I want to see that.
It's attachment nine of.
Okay, sorry. We'll take a look at that, I apologize.
Of the 13 attachments, it's number nine.
Very long attachments.
Totally missed that, I'm sorry. So.
And notably compares to other projects, will be peer projects.
Great. So on the, so the two things, on the hotel side, we are, we have a very low parking ratio for hotel, that's based upon our conversations with parking operators that are just not seeing demand for hotel parking these days, and that's based upon the use of Uber. And the fact that largely people are not, especially in your metro, but largely people aren't renting cars and driving to suburban-style hotels these days. And for people that are staying longer, that might need a car to get to a job for three or four days, you'll often find them having a VRBO or an Airbnb or something different. So with that in mind, our parking ratio is definitely lower for hotel.
That's great.
Which is great. On the office side, we're higher, and the reason for that was purely to give us the best shot of getting a great office tenant for phase one. But as you know, our phase two office building, which is the bigger office building, is on a smaller parcel, will likely not have nearly as much parking. And so that gives us the ability to kind of see how phase one goes, build out this great project, have the pedestrian streets in the connection to Metro, and then market an office building with less parking in phase two.
And some of that parking could potentially be used as overflow for the high school at night for special events.
Yes, yes, exactly. So that, other than that, I think our other parking ratios are probably, we're at point eight for residential, which is smaller than you're typically used to seeing, but we want to encourage people to get out of their cars or not own cars on the residential side. And on retail, I think we're pretty standard market conditions for retail. I'd say on grocery, we'd rather be at four per thousand, but the grocer we're talking to requires five, so in that case, we need to give in.
And so in the recommendations, the SESP recommendation for the TDM plan, do you have a sense of what that would look like?
Sorry, thank you. Yeah, so I've done, I've done a number of TDM plans in the city and Montgomery County, have not done one in the city of Falls Church yet, so it would be helpful probably for me to look at something you've done in the past and respond to it. But typically, TDM is a mixture of, I mean, you probably know this because you're a smart growth advocate, but it's getting information out to users to make sure they understand where, where Metro is, or what the access to Metro is, when the next train is coming. In a lot of projects, you'll do TV screens and lobbies or text messages to residents that they, if they want to, so they know when the next buses or metros are coming. When people move in, you have a whole education packet on transportation demand. In many cases, you'll actually offer incentives. If they don't take a parking space, they can get a credit for Metro or something. So there's a bunch of measures we can do. Bike share, obviously, is another one, car share, which we would have on site, too. So, yeah, I think we're open to ideas. Our goal is to reduce parking also. It doesn't, it doesn't make a lot of sense for us to spend a lot of money on parking if it's not going to be used, so our preference would be to figure out how to get people to use Metro as well.
Those are all great. I just, I'd love to you free to look at the, the report, you can get it.
Okay.
And then think about our comment about the very strong TDM plan. What would be a gold standard TDM plan for this region? I think we, this I can.
Okay, great.
Do you have to give it a ribbon?
Kind of metal.
Mr. Puente, you had sent an email to me at some point talking about metered parking as something to consider. I didn't know if you wanted to address that at this stage, or that's the next step along the way, or you've come off that.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know if it's been considered, if it's something that we can consider in later phases. It's obviously something that is part of anything, what a strong TDM plan would look like.
No, our intention is to have metered parking.
Oh, okay.
At street level?
Yeah, yeah. So our intention is at street level to have metered parking, and we'd have to work with the city on Park Mobile or the right app, because you guys haven't done it yet. And our intention in the garage is to, well, to some extent, we're going to have to, and the reason is, once we connect this project to Metro, and we build out not just this, but ultimately what gets built on the Womato parcel, if you don't do metered parking, you're going to end up with people parking on your streets all day and walking to Metro. So we're going to have to do it from, to some extent, from a protective perspective, but it also then encourages people to take alternative transportation, so, and it encourages retail turnover of parking, which you want in front of the retailers. So the idea would be some sort of Park Mobile on the street. Within the garages, we would need, we certainly will need to monitor that for the same reason, because of Metro proximity and school proximity, quite frankly. You could have kids parking all day in the public spaces, bless you. So we haven't figured out what that would be. There likely would be a validation period of two, you know, maybe it's two hours free or something like that if you're in the garage, and then you start making, charging people beyond that.
Okay. Paul, for staff, is the parking management planned separate from the TDM plan, or is it the same?
For staff, we often see them included in the same document. Technically, they would be different things, but when the city's looking, you asked about what is a typical TDM plan look like for the city, and often it's broken down into four pieces. One is designing the site originally to be pedestrian, bicycle, transit multimodal friendly. So what's going into the site design itself that allows people to make travel choices? Second, exactly as the applicant said, is what information and incentives are being provided. So when people move into their building, do they know there's a bus line that goes right in front of the building? And do they know where that bus line goes?
Right.
Or do they know when the buses come by? How frequently do they travel? Is it a Saturday-only line? Is it a rush hour-only line? That there are some challenges to these things. If they want to pick up an Uber, how do they do that? What if they've never installed the Uber app?
Right.
Is there someone who can help them? Is there someone who can help them find a carpool? The third thing is monitoring. So how do you actually keep track of what's happening? Is there a reason people aren't getting on the bus? Or is it just too hard to get across the street and they can't walk to the grocery store? Do we need to do a giveaway with grocery store cards?
Uh-huh.
If you don't ask, you don't know. And then the fourth piece is adaptive management. So as part of monitoring and as part of the incentive packages, if there are targets set out and they're not being reached, how do you tweak the program? Or what are the things in the, in the toolbox that you might go to next?
That's great. Yeah, all of those would be part of it. Agreed. That's what typical TDM, a good TDM would have, all those.
And I assume that you guys get the revenue with the metered parking, right?
Yes.
Since it's private.
Yeah. Yeah, and also, I did mention, but we would also be charging, obviously, for residential parking and office parking. So there, there wouldn't be an incentive for employees to just park for free, or residents to not have a car. So everything would be charge parking.
And I would say that, you know, we've looked at the attachment nine, and it looked at the ratios, and you've given an explanation both of the work session today. Let me speak for myself. Anything we can do to reduce the amount of parking on that site, I think we're, we have been, as a commission, pretty favorable to and appreciating that it's at it, right at the metro station. I'm not looking for extra parking there, generally speaking. I'd rather use, have it for uses or green space or other, making it more walkable instead of places for cars.
Right.
So if there's a way to reduce that at the next phase, that would be well received, I suspect.
Right.
Particularly since it's our first and only chance to build around a metro.
Yeah, exactly.
Do it right.
Any other questions?
Just one question. And I've been asking a lot about transportation questions as we've gone along, and I just want to make sure that we're clear about like, when some of these answers are coming in future, in future phases. Because I see that in the staff's draft motion, you know, it's referring to something that we discussed at the last meeting about tighten, you know, and it's kind of a vague term, tightening up the intersection. And then in the draft concessions, there's also some vague language in the transportation concession that's something to the effect of, what's shown on the plan may not be what we do, we'll work with the city. I mean, the language is all sort of aspirational and a little vague, and so I just want to make sure that whatever city staff has sort of deemed is required, or, you know, and I do appreciate, I had also asked a question last time about previous traffic studies that have been done, the VDOT 870, Mr. Stotter provided that, even though it had been out there, I may have seen it in the past and forgotten, but I reread it, and I was comforted to see the results of that, which were pretty thorough. But I just want to make sure that this motion, which is again, sort of saying that in the future, I guess it's referencing the SESP, that some of these things will be done. And maybe we'll talk more about the draft concessions with council next week, but I just felt that language was a little vague, at least what I'm used to seeing in like voluntary concession, proffer language. To me, that seemed a little, a little vague. I feel like it should be nailed down a little more as far as what, you know, you as the developer will provide versus, you know, and make sure that is lining up with what staff has determined is required or is ideal, and making sure that, you know, we're not sort of shooting past each other with, okay, we'd like this, and their side's saying, well, we'll do, we'll work with you and do as best as we can, you know, what's on the plan, we may not do, we may do something else. It just, I'd rather have it more defined if we can, and maybe that has to happen later on. This is a slightly different process than we normally follow, so that could be part of, part of it, but.
Is this specific to Haycock and seven intersection?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so our preference would be to have that more defined also. I think we need to, we're working with MBTA and staff on kind of the, all the streetscape improvements there, and I think that'll inform a lot of what happens at that intersection. So we're not being vague for any other reason that we just don't know the answer to it yet. We know that there's four feet of wiggle room there, essentially, where the road is wider than it needs to be. And so then, the idea at SCE site plan would be to work with all of you to figure out what's the right use for that four feet, whether it's landscaping, or it's striping, or it's, you know, once we get, also, we need to get feedback, obviously, from VDOT and the MBTA, and then figure out if we've got it covered.
Okay.
Yeah, there are several stakeholders, obviously. The signal itself is controlled by VDOT. MBTA is, is putting up fifteen and a half, fifteen point seven million dollars.
Right.
To improve transportation in the immediate area. The applicant, obviously, has a, has an interest, and of course, the city as well, and the travelers who use the streets every day. So there are a lot of parties that are interested. I think some of the details do get worked out after the application is accepted. I think there will be additional level of review, and certainly, that takes time and attention. And I think once the square footages are set, as we're going through the site plan steps, it makes that analysis not only mean, more meaningful, but, but possible.
Yeah.
I mean, it could get down to things like, are the, are the lane configurations going in the correct direction in terms of how many left-turn lanes, right-turn lanes, straight lanes? Just as a point of example, actually, the signal falling over at Annandale and Hillwood has been a great opportunity to say, gosh, do we actually have the lanes configured in the right direction? That we've got two lanes of capacity, one is empty and one is full and doesn't clear the light? Well, do we need to do it that way when we put that signal back up? So when you have changes is when you have opportunity often to reexamine old problems.
Speaking of, speaking of the signal, the warrant analysis that was also provided in there, that was done by Grove Slade, obviously, we're asking VDOT for an exception to the spacing. Do we know when we're going to get an answer on that?
They have, I think they, 30 days, local office is their review period, but then they have to send their recommendation down to Richmond, and that's another 30 days.
Right.
Is the other proposed light also within a close distance?
On Haycock?
Yeah.
That's in our, that portion is within the city, so it's actually, VDOT just wanted us to look at it, on their impacts on.
Right.
Their existing roadways and lights, but there'll be, we've requested a warrant analysis that we'll look at for that light.
And that's a little part of it.
You know, that's got to be awfully complicated situation with everybody involved, different ownerships, different jurisdictions, different money coming from all different directions. And it's, it's, you know, no wonder it's vague, because it's got to be so darn much. Will there be general hearings on that part at all for some of the changes that are going to be made? Because that's, some of it's likely to be pretty massive.
I think the site plan does go through all the boards and commissions, and so certainly, whether it's the Citizens Advisory Committee on Transportation, or this group here, the Planning Commission, those would all be appropriate forums to discuss the transportation elements.
Because that's probably one of the biggest changes that has to be made with all the infrastructure out in that area, and all the electrical connection, I mean, rather mind-boggling, but not the Walter Phillips.
Mr. Rankin, do you have anything you want to add, or we're down to me?
I, I have a question, which isn't, it's just because I'm, someone will eventually ask me this, and I want to know how to answer it. Was there ever any thought given to designing it so that phase two was adjacent to the school property, so that if, for some weird reason, phase two never happened, the schools could have a more useful grab at it? I mean, the geometry of the site doesn't seem to lend itself to that with this general plan, but I don't know if that ever came up.
Yeah, it's a good question. So the, we did study a whole bunch of different plans initially about a year ago when we submitted to the city. The main driver was this goal of having the commons finished all at once with retail on both sides of the street.
Yeah.
So that you have this central retail space, and because of the width of the site, you really can't.
And the grade made you have it going north and south.
So you almost get forced to push it right up to the high school for the first phase. But, yeah, we thought about that. We did, we did think about different phasing options, but that would seem to be the only way to make it all work together.
And then the other thing is, I still think that a lot of people, when they see that offset intersection in the middle, like me, are going to be like, how is that going to work? So anything you guys can do over time to provide visuals or explanations for how that actually isn't going to be a disaster, I think people would appreciate.
Okay.
I kind of, I trust you guys on that, but it, just looking at it, you're sort of like, hmm, I could imagine times when no one's going to go anywhere because they're not really sure who has the right of way.
Okay, you got it. Yeah, and we will study that with.
I mean, I'm hoping everyone's just going to be going slow enough that it'll just work.
Right. And we'll study that with Grove Slade as well. I think our, what we took solace in is that if worse comes to worse, it becomes kind a pinwheel intersection, where you have the two roads come through and you create a little park in the middle. So, we feel like we have a backup that would work, but, you know, we'll study that as well, because we want to make sure it works too.
That's all, yeah.
All right. Well, I don't have that many questions, but I do think it's appropriate to make some comments in general. This is a unique process for us. I know this is the only one you know here in Falls Church, but for usually, this is sort of the big, the big vote here, and the Planning Commission controls that process, but now it has this additional step. But I do think this is a really big moment for the Planning Commission, and I want to say, you know, a few words about that. I was fortunate enough to be on the committee to help select EYA, and PN Hoffman, and Regency, and we had really high expectations of the group. The proposals that we received, and the one we received specifically, was really impressive. And we had some vision about how this process would go, even though it was going to be condensed and unique. And I will say for myself on the Planning Commission that this process has gone as well as had been hoped, if not better. It has been really clear, your commitment to the community, the number of meetings, the willingness to work with us specifically, you had many work sessions, come to early morning meetings, late night meetings. It has been, while compressed, I think, a lot of information disseminated. And with each submission, changes have been made, I think, that are reflective of listening to the community, and to the various boards and commissions, and us specifically. So, I want to thank you on behalf of myself for the process, and also on behalf of the Planning Commission. This is a really, we've been saying this honestly for like three, four years about this potential development, and it's a chance to really transform one of the few gateways to our city. And I think that the plan that you and your team have come up with really gave us an opportunity to achieve what we had hoped, both from a planning standpoint, from environmental standpoint, from a transportation standpoint, linking potentially a much larger even group in that area, whether it's in our borders or not within our borders. And when I got involved in this early on, one of the comments I made in a sort of public meeting is I wanted the city to really think big about what we do here, and I think that your proposal and what we're going to be voting on here, or to recommend to the City Council, meets that objective. I think you did think big, I think it's really going to be all we had hoped, I think it's been thoughtful. I think the proposal and the commitment to Phase One is really tremendous. This is a big site, and the willingness to put in the resources and the energy to make that happen on a large percentage basis is a really, a big commitment to you. I know that has a lot of challenges, but I think it'll transform the city in a way that will do what you hope, which is activate it right away, and for that, I'm really pleased. Very pleased. In the staff report, there was a table that was comparing the interim agreement to the SCE, and if you go one by one, which I was doing in preparation today, I think that with the exception of maybe one area, which is the office space, on the other seven uses, the retail, the grocer, the civic, which is unspecified, I'm not actually sure about that one, but the hotel, the multifamily, and the senior housing, depending on how you view senior housing, have all been an improvement, even on the interim agreement. So, that's when I say, there has been a willingness by the applicant to move, and your group to move, it's right there in the numbers. You have improved the amount of square footage on almost all of those things, and made the kind of changes that we had hoped. The hotel is larger, the multifamily is smaller, things like that. So, these are areas that are important. I think what we're voting on here tonight is the density, the height, the uses, and when I go through that list, those uses are wide and varied, and allow this area to have the best chance of thriving because of the diversity of mixes. I think the height, we had been, we had been open as a planning commission when this came before us before to extending that height. I think you've been really responsible with that. Every building wasn't fifteen stories, and it wasn't right up against the school, and considerations continue to be made for that. Again, appreciative of that. I know we're voting on the parking today, unless you have a, you do have, your group has the ability to make those changes. I do hope that we can reduce the parking somewhat, but I appreciate that we are committing to what you have proposed this evening. So, in the staff report, it goes through what the six, there were six goals that were laid out for the community, and the staff goes through and says, you know, how did we do on these goals? And to every single goal, I think this meets them, and they, let me read some of them, because I think it's worth repeating for the public and for even the Planning Commission. One was to maximize the boundary requirements, so that's, we have done that. We've maximized it to the fullest extent, I really believe that, get, you know, the most bang for our buck. This is, goal two is encourage creative proposals, paraphrasing because they're a lot longer. As I said, I think this is really a creative proposal and a wonderful use of the land. Goal three was promote environmentally friendly, responsible development, that is supported by sustainable systems of green infrastructure and utilities, et cetera. I think this proposal does do that. There's been a lot of attention by this group, but also the economic, what's their acronym? It's economic ESC?
EDA.
No.
Oh, was that other one?
EDC.
Oh, that one.
That, we have seen, you had a whole sustainability liaison on this. The other is to, I skipped ahead, I'm sorry, to encourage collaboration between the economic uses and the educational programs. I think that the constant interaction, we've seen it at many meetings, I've been at many meetings, whether this one or early mornings on Friday, where that is happening, and getting reports about how that interplay has gone. Recently, on this latest submission, you've talked about moving the hotel portion in a way that is consistent with trying to work with the educational programs. And then, the goal five is provide an inclusive process in the plan development and implementation for the site. That goes back to what I said before, all the meetings that you guys have had. And the final one was to provide a gateway to the city which instills a sense of place through the use of high-quality urban design, a flexible connected street grid, multimodal access within and to adjacent sites, and I think we have achieved that in this plan as well. So, this is a long speech to basically, you know, say, I'm really appreciative of what you've done and the proposals that's before us. I do think it has the opportunity to really transform Falls Church. So, with that, I will really gladly support this motion and this recommendation.
Absolutely. Could I add something to that? Just as you were talking, I was thinking that, you know, not only this is so important to our city and to this area, and something, the biggest site we've been able to do, but this is going to serve as the hallmark for all the future development up in this area, because you're not only dealing with our site, which I hope will be, set the goals of, in all areas, but also you've got the site for, from the universities, you've got the site over Ramada, you've got Don Byer, you've got the Federal Realty. Hey, that's four corners, you know? And that is humongous, and so important to the entire area and to the, set the tone for the type of cooperative development that could be done with different jurisdictions that will add to each other, support each other, and end up being truly remarkable in the area, because I don't think there's any other area that has the type of crossover that we do with Fairfax County. And just, just the, just struck me of how important this is to the whole future of this Hancock Street Road and Route Seven connection.
Yep.
Wow. Do it well.
Do well.
Before, any other commissioners have any comments they want to make? All right, well, before I go to a vote, this is technically a public hearing, let me open it up to the public. Anybody want to say anything on behalf of the public? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close it to public comment. And accordingly, I will entertain a motion for this matter, the official title of which is, for the resolution to grant the special exception entitlement.
Sure. Happy to roll this out. I didn't hear any recommended or suggested edits amongst our members, so I think we can stay pretty much with the staff recommended motion. So, whereas an application for a special exception entitlement to allow a mixed-use development project up to a maximum height of fifteen stories, it's been submitted by Falls Church Gateway Partners, the applicant pursuant to Section 48-486(c) in conformance with the procedure set forth in Section 48-488(b) of the city code. And whereas the two-step process outlined in Section 48-488(b) for special exception entitlement and special exception site plan allows for further refinement of special project elements during special exception site plan, whereas the Planning Commission finds that the proposed project is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and substantially achieves the goals of the special revitalization district for education and economic development. And now therefore, I move that the Planning Commission recommend approval of TR-19-08 to City Council for public hearing and action on May 13th, 2019. Further, I move that the Planning Commission recommend the following elements be incorporated into the special exception entitlement materials. One, hotel massing away from school plaza. Two, elements in ground floor uses to activate the Hancock Road and Leesburg bike frontages. Three, placemaking and amenity plan and other illustrious materials. And four, further refinement of the phasing plan, including timing and parking tabulations by phase. Further, I move that the Planning Commission recommend the following elements be incorporated into the future SESP materials in addition to elements already required by code. One, the intersection of Route Seven and Hancock Road be appropriately designed as a city gateway, including tightening roadway geometry, increasing pedestrian access and safety, and appropriate landscaping. Two, a full traffic signal be considered at New Street B instead of the proposed Hawk Signal. And three, a parking management and transportation demand management plan that supports non-automobile mode of travel, and thereby minimizes roadway congestion and reduces the need for auto parking.
And I'll gladly second it.
Any other comments on the motion? All right, Mrs. Aruzzi?
Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
Mr. Lodiska?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Mr. Puentes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Terrific. Well, congratulations.
Thank you so much, everybody. Look forward to working with you.
Yep.
Set your star brightly.
Let's move on to the next item of business.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Before you for action tonight is a site plan application on a new showroom for Byer Volvo to be located along Route Seven across the street from Birch Street, which is the street that bisects the shopping center with the Giant on the west end of town. Staff is making a positive recommendation on the application with some comments to be considered as part of final architectural design, as well as potential redevelopment of the Gordon Road Triangle area as it relates to the street network. For more information, I want to turn it over to the lead planner for the application, Ms. Akita Ruzi.
Thank you, Mr. Stoddard. This application is for a site plan to construct a new two-story showroom at 1119 and 1121 West Broad Street. In July 2018, the applicant obtained approval for several variances and a special use permit. Those included a special use permit to allow a motor vehicle sales use as a conditional use in the M1 zone, a variance to allow a motor vehicle sales facility to be located within 208 feet instead of 300 feet of a residential district, and a second variance to allow a front yard setback of 20 feet instead of 25 feet in the M1 district. The current proposal also includes a subdivision to consolidate the two existing lots to build the showroom. The applicant is also requesting a waiver to provide one loading space instead of the three required spaces, and a second waiver to allow a parking lot perimeter landscape with less than 10 feet, and a reduction in the required parking lot perimeter landscaping density. The Planning Commission raised several questions at their last work session on February 19th related to stormwater and lighting. The staff has prepared some responses in the staff report, I'll just briefly highlight those responses. On stormwater, the site plan complies with the city's stormwater ordinance, both quantity and quality, through a reduction in impervious area. The impervious area is reduced from .82 acres to .7 acres with a corresponding reduction in the volume and rate of the stormwater runoff. The amount of nutrients measured as pounds per year of phosphorus are also reduced. On lighting, the city's lighting code requires spillage control of no more than 0.12 one-foot candles measured at any .7 feet beyond a property line, and the site plan generally meets that requirement. Additionally, the special use permit for the conditional use approved last year has a higher threshold for lighting requirement, and the applicant has met those standards as well, but I'll let the applicant talk more about that during the presentation. Applicant has submitted a revised site plan that addresses previous staff comments issued on the site plan. However, there are some inconsistencies in the final site plan due to some last-minute minor architectural changes. Applicant has agreed to submit an updated final site plan that includes these changes for staff review and approval. The proposed motion for approval by Planning Commission tonight includes a condition that addresses this item. Finally, based on staff review, the proposed project meets all applicable city code policies and regulations, and is generally consistent with the comprehensive plan. On the site plan, staff recommends approval with two conditions. One, at the time of future redevelopment of the site plan and surrounding parcels, the owner agrees to coordinate with city staff on appropriate site design and layout compatible with the potential extension of Birch Street and related streetscape improvements and driveway relocation. And two, an updated final site plan that reflects the final architectural design will be submitted for review and approval by city staff post the Planning Commission approval or consideration tonight. And on the subdivision, staff recommends preliminary and final approval with no conditions. With that, I think the applicant has the presentation, I'll defer to them, and I'm happy to take any questions from the Planning Commission.
Thank you very much. Let me turn it right over to the applicant. Do you have a presentation that?
Yes.
You're going to make? Terrific.
I have a quick question for staff.
Yeah, go for it then, I'm sorry.
You referenced, and I'm trying to follow it, and I was, I'd read through everything, but you were referencing architectural changes which are changing the site plan. You, I mean, are they going to talk about that, or are you going to talk about that?
I think they will talk about some of the architectural changes.
Yeah, specifically what's creating the need for the last-minute change, that's all I want to ask.
Sure. I'll let them talk about it, but they are sort of facade changes, some of the windows did shrink in size, and also a ramp was added. Those are the changes I was talking about, but I'll let the applicant.
Dynamically.
There were actually items that you brought up at the last period, and then we went back and worked on it, and we were required, there's a small handicap ramp for the entryway in the back, which we want to put a handrail on, and it wasn't reflected on the elevation, so we have elevations not reflect the ramp. And then you had asked about extending the wrap around, and what that does is because that's a little thicker wall, because it goes on top of the CMU, so the site plan needs to reflect where that was, and that's, that's shown on that now.
Okay.
So, it doesn't, and it doesn't affect square footage, and none of that is. And I think the also, the other thing is you had asked about a bike rack. We had a bike rack at the back of the building, but we put it under a solar canopy, because it just didn't make sense where it was. We have a bike rack that's out near the sidewalk, but then we have another bike rack that's internal in the site, but that is no longer, it's no longer attached to the building with a canopy. We removed that, and we put it under one of the solar canopies. It just, you know, it was just a more practical sense, you know, sensible way to do it.
Having protect it.
Yes. Well, we have, we, the code requires a certain amount to have coverage, so since we're already putting up a solar canopy, you know.
Makes sense.
Yeah, why not? So, that is, those are the site plan, the architectural changes that affect the site plan. So, it's really kind of a naming convention, and then indicating, and I can, you know, I have a, an elevation, I can show you where that ramp is.
And it should be in the, it'll be in the presentation.
It's in the presentation, so you'll, I mean, we'll just point it out to you when it, when it pops up.
Hi, I'm Antoinette Isherwood with Walter Phillips, and I think you guys have heard this presentation several times now, so we'll just quickly run through some of the final things that we have on the plan. As you all know, the site is located at 1119 and 1121 West Broad Street, which is the existing, well, now they're empty buildings, it's like new, and a service shop that's next to Volvo Service Building, looking at the picture to the right here, and on the left is the Kia dealership. So, in summary, the site is about .85 acres and is currently zoned M1. We obtained variances, BZA approvals back in July to allow motor vehicle sales facility within 208 feet of an R district, and then also asked for a front yard setback of 20 feet from the face of curb, and that was to meet the other West Broad Street requirements. In M1, it is 25 feet. And then also for the use of a motor vehicle sales use on the premises. So, our total site has 22 parking spaces, and that, and we also have 12 bike parking spaces. Six of them are covered, and six of them are the retail spaces accessible right off the street's sidewalk. And then we are also showing six solar canopies, and we're widening the West Broad streetscape to a greater than 10-foot clear sidewalk. So, here's the existing conditions. Go to the next slide, please. This is the proposed conditions, just an overlay here. You can see we're adding more landscaping on the site, both in the perimeter and for internal to the site. And just to go through how kind of the site operates, you enter off of West Broad Street, somebody would come in and drop their car off to the service loading bays in the back of the building, and the employee would take over from there and get the cars and bring it over to the service dealership on the adjacent property, and similarly, somebody would pick up their cars from there, and would be able to drive out down that one-way lane out back out to West Broad Street. The solar canopy, sorry, it's kind of hard to read in the slide here, but they're basically the rectangles over the parking spaces. You'll see there are some towards the rear of the site, some along the southeast portion of the site, and then some in the middle parking areas. And then, under the solar canopy, that's like the middle, middle southeast, that's where the covered bike spaces are. And the other, the uncovered bike spaces, which are like the short-term visitor spaces, are up by the streetscape over on West Broad Street as you enter the site. So, as Akita mentioned, we are decreasing the impervious area on the site from .82 acres to .7 acres, which is a 13% reduction. I mean, I think since even the work session that we attended, we reduced the impervious area even further. I know there was a desire to go even further beyond. I know there was a desire to go even further beyond the requirements. Yes, it was actually three more parking spaces to help really reduce that site area and try to achieve it in a low-impact way. So instead of trying to install a structure that would then need to be maintained, it's really achieved through reducing the impervious area further and reducing the parking spaces on the site. Next slide, please. And so the waivers we're requesting with the site plan is for perimeter parking lot landscaping due to the configuration of the site along the northwest property line and along the southeast property lines. We just can't meet the 10-foot width for the buffer area. Additionally, we're also requesting waivers for the canopy tree density, and that is due to some existing utilities, existing utility easements. And we are also proposing some under-story trees instead of canopy trees in the areas where we have the solar canopies, so that the solar canopies will function as intended. And so that's really the need for this waiver. And additionally, we've requested a waiver for two loading spaces on the site since we are doing our loading off-site, on an off-site property.
Okay, so I can actually show you. I'm not sure we can see it here, but if you see, if you go to the very top drawing, right in the middle, you see that little ramped area underneath those three little, right there. That's where we have the little ramp, because the parking goes down, but the elevation of the showroom is still up high, so we need to have a handicap ramp to get you back up. And then if you go down, you see the windows there? Before, they were going further down, but now they don't go all the way down. And the reason is because the floor of that service building is a little bit higher also. So we wanted to have a curb on the inside, and that's just good practice. You don't want glass where you have vehicles. We want to have a little bit of a break. So that, those are the two architectural changes. And this is what's, actually tomorrow I'm going to see Doug Fraser to submit, switch this sheet out, because he says I only want to approve the one that's been approved by a site plan. So those are the changes. So last time that you were here, you asked me about glass and the materials. So when we talked about CMU, it isn't like gray block. This is the concrete masonry unit that we're using. So what's visible on the alley, it's actually a groundface block. It's sort of a light, you know, it's a light grayish color, and it would be adjacent. You were asking what that white glass is like. It's not really like what we call, it's called milky white, but it's really just a, well, you can see, you know, it's a frosted glass. So where it's not clear glass, this is the glass that we have. It's still glass, but it just has a frosting on it. And the blue glass, which is where the Volvo, in lieu of having big signage, this is kind of our identifier, this is a Volvo blue. So this is the blue glass. These are the actual samples of the glass that will be used. And, you know, you can, from the inside, you can still see some light through it, but, you know, it's basically for all practical purposes. Even at night, it's just gonna read blue. This in the evening reads white. And if you look at it from here, you can see how it is, because it'll always be lit somewhat from the inside. Not, you know, basically to avoid glare, but you will see it as white in contrast. And then the aluminum panels are, this is the actual, it's an Alucabond panel. This is what the aluminum panels, where we don't have glass. This is the aluminum panel, this is the actual material. It's an insulated aluminum skin. It goes on top of your, if it's CMU, it'll go on top of it. So it actually, it sits out about an inch and a half, which is, because it's a finished material, it's not reflected on the site plan, but it makes the wall where it is about an inch and a half. So these are the materials that you'd ask. This is basically, you know, other than the doors and the hardware, these are all the materials that you have.
Those are attractive. I think they're very attractive.
Yeah, we think they are. They're really, they're really nice. We've just finished up.
Industrial attractiveness.
Well, thank you for the presentation. Do we have any questions?
I don't have that one.
All right.
I'm still worried about the circulation. Where is the Gordon Road light on that?
Gordon Road is further up.
Way further up?
Yes.
And that's up in front of the Kia?
Kia, yes.
Is there any way for people to get from this site and go out by that light? Because they can't make a right, a left-hand turn out of there. No way, and heaven help us.
Well, we've also were, sorry, again, sorry to read on this plan here, but for a future connection through the Kia site potentially. And so they could potentially go back out to Gordon Road.
Yeah, because that whole intersection backs up so much with the afternoon traffic and morning traffic and everything else. And, you know, from down with the West and Broad, it really is a total backup. And I've seen some people even coming out of there. Of course, the U-Haul place and everything, oh my God. But if there could ever be another exit that goes through the property and up to the Gordon Road, it would be so much safer. I'm trying to see if there could be one there now, but.
I think you have to wait till the next phase of our property, because our goal is to realign. We don't like it either, as, you know, Bayer doesn't like, you know, the idea. They would like to see a road realigning in Gordon Road and light, because there isn't much traffic gonna be leaving this site, because with the traffic that there is, because it's called the valet service, when you drop off, you as a customer are not gonna be driving around. A porter will take your car, which is pretty much how it's done now.
Yeah, but when you pick it up, you are gonna be driving, and that's where you go out. That's where you have to make, your only choice is if I can't turn. And, you know, I don't want the body shop to have to do any more business.
I mean, sometimes today, it's not hard to make a left turn.
No, but sometimes it's impossible.
So you'd make a right, fair enough?
Then they'd go all the way, never mind.
Well, the one thing I can say, it's probably gonna make Gordon Road better, because right now, what ends up happening is a lot of the cars come out of the service building, but the customers don't end up coming to the service building. They actually just go to the showroom and just call.
They ferry the cars back and forth.
Yeah, so they're ferrying cars back and forth, which that is limited. They basically have two people on staff. All they do is to drive cars 200 yards.
Right.
Which is, you know, a very poor use of manpower. So this will help in that regard, in that you're not gonna have cars from the service building going back up across the Gordon Road. And, you know, the fire marshal is requiring that we keep, you know, eventually our intent when we redevelop the service building is that you would have, you know, the top one-way in and then exit out. But right now, the way things are configured, we need to maintain perimeter access, you know, because of fire concerns.
Right, right.
So we can't eliminate that, though. In practical terms, we don't see customers, you know, exiting through there, because they're just not gonna go in and pick up their, you know, they're not gonna go to the service building and pick up their car. They have to go to the service advisor and, you know, make their payments, whatever, and have their car delivered to them. So we don't think we're making it, we're certainly, it's not a big improvement, but we're not creating a bigger problem, and we're alleviating some of the cars driving back and forth 200 or 300 yards to get from the existing showroom, which is where the current service advisors are, yet no service is done there.
Any other questions?
I have a question about the, with the solar canopies. They, will they power?
Well, they backfeed into the grid, but they will also, there's car charging stations under those solar canopies. So if you come in and you want to charge your car, you would charge directly. But there's basically gonna be a storage unit in the building, so there'll be some battery backup that goes in, so that there's always available, because on cloudy days, you still charge cars. And when you have excess, it goes back into the grid.
Is it, I mean, this is criticism, but is it somewhat of a gimmick in the sense that like, you don't have solar panels on the roof in the building? You're completely not turning back to the solar?
Part of the reason with putting solar panels on the roof is, you could do that, but the problem is that there are heat gain, they create a lot of extra weight. You know, it becomes a much more structural problem. And what ends up happening, you don't have the ability to reflect heat off. So it becomes a net gain for the building, so it's not a super-efficient way. A white roof with separate solar panels is a better solution. And that's what we think we're doing. And, you know, maybe at some point, they'll come up with a way to do it on the roof that makes sense.
Yeah, and I think it's fine. I just, you know, when you hear like, oh, we're sort of trading solar panels for smaller trees.
Well, if you had a dark roof, yeah.
Some people would be like, well, I'd rather have big trees and no solar panels, or, I don't, I mean, that's right off.
Well, they're much easier, at that level, they're gonna be easier to maintain. You know, they're modular, it's a more efficient way to do it. But, you know, there's, we have the land area to do it. If we were in a more urban area where we just, the only thing we had is a roof, then you would go through that exercise.
Will they at least design the roof in terms of the equipment, so that it's not spread all out, but maybe concentrated?
Actually, the way we're doing it, we have a little elevator area. There's a 10-by, a 10-by-20-foot area that all the equipment is going on, and the rest of the roof is a white reflective roof. That's the most efficient way in terms of heat rejection. Because in this area, I'm sure you're familiar, we don't have that much of demand for, we have more of a demand for cooling than we have for heating. There's only 37 heating requirement days, while there's about 180 cooling requirement days. So you're much better off designing for heat rejection than heat gain in terms of being, you know, efficient.
Is today one of those days?
Yeah, no. And then this is less of a question for you than for staff. I mean, I think you guys, in terms of the proposed motion, I suspect you guys don't mind the call for coordination on future development and, I'm sure. But I wonder, is that an appropriate thing in this, in this request for us to sort of request some sort of coordination with future redevelopment on other sites? I mean, it seems, I think everyone agrees with the sentiment, but it seems to me a little bit awkward to say, sure, we'll do this site plan here, but by the way, do you promise to work with us on stuff over here? Because they're not, unless this request is specifically in regards to future development adjacent being done in a way that affects this specific site, which maybe it is, but it's not super clear to me that that's what we're saying. You see what I'm saying?
I think if I understand the question, what you're asking about is the suggested condition number one, where it talks about future redevelopment, future redevelopment of this site and surrounding parcels.
Yeah, I mean, I think if it's meant related to this site, sure.
It's a nexus question. Is there really a nexus here to ask for that? I don't even know whether they're asking.
I mean, yeah.
But, I tend to agree, I actually, I tend to agree that it's a vague condition to move up top anybody. So if something's specific that we want them to do, then we should be specific. We want X, or Y, or Z. By saying the owner will coordinate with staff, I mean, how would we know if they meant that condition? Or if they didn't? And because we're tying it to site plan approval, really you're saying if they don't meet the conditions, then they violated the terms of the site plan. You know, as opposed to like, perhaps, you know, this was voluntary concession language, which is coming from them, that's a little different than conditions that are being imposed on them. So I just think we need to be clear, and maybe that's a good pickup by Mr. Anken. I think perhaps we don't need that here, unless staff can explain further about what the thought process was behind it.
Sure, I can certainly speak to the motivation behind the suggestion. So, and this slide is actually, this visual is a good one for that conversation. So Birch Street is what's coming in from the right side of the screen, which as I said earlier, is the street that goes down the center of the Giant Shopping Center. There was, the Urban Land Institute ran a mini technical assistance panel, and I believe there have been Virginia Tech student studies done for this area as well. And as part of those studies, what was considered was a realignment of the street network. So Gordon Road Triangle today, which is offset from Birch Street, could be brought over to this intersection to create a more traditional four-legged intersection. And so in that configuration with the traditional four-legged intersection, the new alignment of Gordon Road, or the continuation of Birch, depending on how it was named, would run almost directly alongside this site here. And so the thought is that whether it's for, you know, do we need 20 feet of fire access off of Broad Street now, or could that fire access come off of this new side street? Could there be sidewalk and street trees installed? Could the driveway be reoriented so that instead of accessing Broad immediately adjacent to an intersection, it now comes off of the side street? That there are opportunities to alleviate some of the left-turn conditions that are of concern? It also might provide more opportunities for greenery as well as increased property frontage for this site.
And like I started, presumably, because we know that the applicant controlled a lot of the land around there and has mentioned vague long-term plans to redevelop, and I assume stuff like that, they'd be more than happy to work with the city on in order to have really high-quality development there.
Yeah, I think we've made a commitment to working with the city, to working that out. I don't think, we prefer not to see something written into as a condition, because our intent is to always be good neighbors. And one of the reasons that that Kia showroom, you know, that parking lot, and why we, the jog and putting that green area right there makes a lot of sense. We would like to see that Birch Street or Gordon Road. We would like to see that realignment, because it really is.
Right, right.
It doesn't work.
Yeah, if you guys do it bigger.
We control all of that site, so it would be a land swap, which makes more sense, because then we would have a super block, which gives us more opportunities for redevelopment of a mixed-use project, which is the ultimate goal.
Absolutely.
So we're gonna come back, you know, and probably not too long in the future, with some sketch ideas of what we want to do.
I know.
You know, and Mike Bayer has, you know, this is something he's been thinking about, you know, for 15 years, because it's taken him that long to acquire these small parcels. I mean, it's not easy to buy these little things. I mean, you know, you buy them one year, one in two years, whatever. So finally, they're at the point where there's enough critical mass that we can start that dialogue. And one of the issues was not giving up the Volvo dealership from the manufacturer and getting them to agree to a relocation, which is not that easy, because there's a lot of things that go into how dealerships, you know, they do their planning. So Volvo Cars USA has contributed quite a bit of money to make this happen, to free that up, and then to eventually allow for a unified service and showroom building, because their ultimate goal is to make a, they're going all-electric, they want everything compact, they want their service, they want their showroom, they want the cars. They don't want you to store lots of cars on the surface, because that's just not the nature of how car, for them anyway, is going. So this is, you know, it's taken some time. We're finally at a point where we can say, yeah, we can meet those conditions, remove the showroom, tear the other place down, and look at that as a super block. And for that to happen, we're gonna have to relocate Gordon Road, because it makes no sense, because we're not gonna have a service building and a showroom building, and new cars get delivered up on Gordon Road. That makes no sense from the way the dealership works.
So it sounds like what you're saying is, in spirit, you totally are aligned with.
Yes, yes, we are.
But based on Mr. Krasert's thought and my thought, maybe having in the motion the way it is is not ideal. I mean, I guess to me, if we wanted to be more specific about what we want, I guess we could, which I think is just this notion of streetscape and just the fact it would affect that side of the site.
I don't think we've done anything here that would preclude, you know, an entrance often extended. Right now, the service drives are offset anyway, so if the road were extended, we, you know, we're already kind of, are thinking that eventually that's gonna be the connection point.
Yeah, that drive becomes the sidewalk.
Exactly.
The entrance is still right there.
Right.
Right.
That's exactly it.
You're not even, with that whole area, you're going down into a very difficult-shaped area anyway.
Right.
And down to the bike trail.
Yeah.
And that's, you know.
We figured out that we could put a small parking deck back there. And that would solve a lot of issues, because then we don't have to have all the car storage on the other side, because right now, a lot of the new cars are stored on.
Yeah.
Right, up in the upper site.
Exactly.
Out of curiosity, do they still have the one holdout up there?
Not, yeah, there's a timeline for it now.
Okay, okay.
The pest control paramount, yeah.
Oh, I thought it would have been the iron.
No, that's been bought. The paramount is the only one.
How long have they owned that place?
About 30-some years.
Not the iron? I thought that was one of the big holdouts up there.
Now, Mike has made an agreement, there's a timeline for this.
Wow, it's just that pest control right there at the back parking lot.
Yeah.
Just to put this out there, that this condition could be seen not only as a requirement for coordination, but also permission for coordination. That now there's something on the books, that this site was always intended to be part of the conversation for the redevelopment.
Yeah, I think permission instead of requirement would be a better word. We'd like to see that, because it's not as restrictive, it doesn't put us in a box, you know, because I think everyone wants. know, because I think everyone wants to have some flexibility.
I see the necessity of having that.
I think it's important to include some language, so that it is part of the record, that there was the thought that this would be coordinated as part of the redevelopment.
Yeah, I, we have no problem, I think coordination would be a perfect word to use, that, you know, any future development is done in coordination.
Yeah, I, yeah. I mean, honestly, whatever they're comfortable, to me, it, you know, it says, the current one says, "At the time of future redevelopment of the site and surrounding parcels, the owner agrees to coordinate with city staff on appropriate site design and layout compatible with the potential extension of Burt Street and related streetscape improvements and driveway locations." I mean, I, yeah, I mean, I, as I say, if it weren't there, I assume coordination.
Coordination is going to be required, we, we're not going to go, we have to come to you for any redevelopment, like, we can't go to Barlingpin and get approvals.
Between like the comp plan process, and then the, that type of rezoning might happen or might not, special exception might or might not, I mean, there's going to be somebody, they'll have to coordinate with us.
Well, they would. I think one of the things that we're certainly trying to avoid is the intersection at Pennsylvania and Broad, where the light ended up with a five-way intersection on a three-legged street, because there are two separate driveway entrances that are four feet apart from each other, and so they both require their own phase in the, in the signal. It creates a bit of a headache, and so I think the, the thinking is that if that street is redesigned, the expectation would be, these site entrances may get reworked, and because it's a part of the existing site plan approval, it may not have to come back through the site plan process, that it could be that you guys are already covered by this language, depending on how that gets worked out.
Is, is that intent for future redevelopment of the adjacent sites, and not necessarily this one, then?
Correct, I think, well, and I think some of this speaks to the uncertainty of how redevelopment happens, that if this site redevelops and the street gets reworked, or the site adjacent gets reworked, and this site stays as is, there would still be a desire that even if this building and site isn't changing, to look at how the driveway entrances are working.
And all that infrastructure can be considered while you're doing this.
So, maybe we should tie it, maybe then we should be specific to the aspect of this site, that, as you just mentioned, it may be an issue, so maybe we should be more specific about the driveway that's adjacent, you know, the northern or western driveway or something. Maybe we should be very specific, we're going to tie it to a, I mean, a site plan is a very specific type of approval, that this board, this commission approves, and so, we should, if we're going to have a condition on a site plan, I feel like it needs to be as specific as possible, as far as what aspect within the boundaries of this box that we're approving a site plan for, we are looking to, you know, whatever, whatever we're looking to do in the future, it's tied to this particular property, we should, we should refer to that, so it's very clear what the, what the relationship was for this specific site. So, as you just said, Paul, you're concerned about, staff and the city is concerned about the, how that driveway may function in the future, or whatever, that's what you're talking about, then we should say that, so that we're clear that we've tied it, a specific improvement that they've, they're going to be constructing on the site, and it's all tied up, but it's not a vague, you know, in the future, the site plan's really, let themselves on that on the conceptual type of condition, in my opinion. Am I correct in what you're saying, that it's the driveway, you're concerned about how the driveway may function in the redevelopment scenario?
Well, that's one. I would say that as, I think, positive examples of these kinds of notes in the city's recent history, I think there are some site plans along West Broad Street that included notes on interparcial access agreements, if adjoining neighbors redeveloped, and I think that was used to positively create some driveway connections along West Broad, near the Einstein Bagel. And so, I think the, the intention is, it's not clear how the acreage or the streets or the sites might get developed, you don't know what the block sizes would be, and so I think the intent is, you would want to cover things like, right, a lot of this is talking about the public realm and site access, whether it's pedestrian or vehicle. And so, the, the language in the proposed motion is picking up all those elements, the streetscape, pedestrian access, driveway relocations. The expectation is to, to create flexibility, and I think that's there, is the way the site is laid out. So, I don't think anything in the plan sheet needs to change to accommodate the condition. I think it's just some reference that says, as things move forward in this area, that there may be changes to, to the way some of these sites are changed.
Other than the motion, does anybody have any questions about this? So, we're, we're just at this point, then. Do we have a proposed change? I don't think, it sounds like the applicant is fairly flexible, but is there a way we can make this more specific to appease you gentlemen?
I mean, honestly, I'm a little comfortable with being vague. I think, as you referenced, seeing other properties, I still think a site plan approval procedural standpoint is the place to talk about what might happen on other properties, or, you know, if we can tie it to something specific, this lot, that we want to see in the future, or we don't want, we don't want to preclude, or, we can, I'm okay with a note that is very specific to this property, as opposed to try to, I just don't think the site plan, Brett, doesn't do any more than that. I think there are other venues and application types and other types of processes that would lend themselves to that, and if we can, you know, bend the site plan to do all of that. All the things you said are worthwhile, I think that we're going to want to see, as that, there's going to be a long process, with many steps, to see how this whole side of town begins to unfold, and what the ultimate redevelopment may be, you know, when, and I just feel like, I just, I just don't know what we're getting, I don't know, I mean, on the other hand, I don't think more, more of it, that the applicant's willing to agree as it's worded now, I don't think it really holds them to anything. I mean, saying that he's going to coordinate with us, how would we determine if he's met that or not? What's coordinating? He's had a meeting, then agreed, then said, nah, is that coordinating? They, I just don't know. I mean, you know, I, I'm used to working in a world with very defined conditions, and so, I like to see like, black and white, type of like, so you know if they've met it or not, especially on a site plan. Like, how would we know if they've complied with it or not? You know, that's all, that's really what I'm trying to, trying to get at, on this type of, of approval. So, unless we can come up with something like that, I'd be inclined just to drop it, but. Unless we can come up with language that is a little bit more concrete.
Yeah, I don't feel strongly about it, it struck me as odd, I think Brett makes a good point about the vagueness of it, I don't think it makes a difference one way or the other, like, I don't think it holds them to anything, I don't, the reality is, anything they want to do, if it involves, you know, moving Gordon Road or extending, it's going to be clear coordination with us, because we control the roads, and we wouldn't move it if they would, wouldn't do whatever we want with the entrance, and stuff like that. So, I don't think it matters, I don't feel strongly about it, it seems superfluous.
I think legally, that, you know, not being an attorney or anything, but legally, that it clearly denotes the intent of what needs to be done up there, and I think if we went too prescriptive, it'd have to go back to the buyer attorneys to see if that works with them also.
I don't know what the specific language would look like, I'm okay with the vagueness, the reasons that the staff mentioned, I think it's important to set down a marker, especially for something potentially important as this site. It seems innocuous enough to me, and I think the staff's recommendation makes sense.
Okay, I will, let's, someone make a motion, either way, with it or without it, and then we will have a vote on that, or a proposed amendment. Seems to be people generally in the same place, but we need to make a, a formal motion. So, whoever jumps at it first gets, gets the original.
I'll do it, here on the site plan, page two, twenty eighteen dash oh five, read two with the following conditions: One, at the time of future redevelopment of the site and surrounding parcels, the owner agrees to coordinate with city staff on appropriate site design and layout compatible with the potential extension of Burt Street and related streetscape improvements and driveway relocation; and, two, an updated final site plan that reflects the final architectural design will be submitted for review and approval by city staff.
I'll second that.
Can I make a friendly, we can go to a second, friendly amendment, or a proposal for a friendly amendment to the, to the, to the motion? I would, I'll go along with it, but I, can we strike where it says "and surrounding parcels"? I mean, I just feel like by saying at the future time, the time of the future redevelopment of, because the way it's worded, I mean, does that mean at the time that they, I just don't know, I mean, what are we asking them to do? I don't want to make more of this than we have to, but.
I'm okay with striking it.
We just said "at the time of future redevelopment of the site," and then they agree to coordinate with us, I mean.
What if, just speaking up, sort of out of turn, if it was "at the time of future redevelopment of the site," or "extension of Burt Street, the owner agrees to coordinate with city staff," so bring the Burt Street up and make the Burt Street relocation the focus of the change?
That's fine. I think that should be the trigger.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think if you make Burt Street the trigger, we would have no problem with that, because.
Right, right.
We want to rework our driveways at Burt Street.
Right.
All right, I'm okay with that, so, the, the, maybe we're the motion.
Okay, I'm lost in terms of where we have to do in terms of seconds and re.
The maker of the motion has to say he's okay with it, and then the secondor has to say that she's okay with it.
Are you making it, or is Paul making it?
Well, Paul's.
I mean, we're back to the original motion, that's all.
Yeah, Paul helped me make the amendments.
So, you're, oh, got it, okay.
What Paul said.
All right, so Brett made the friendly amendment with the assistance of Paul, is the person who made the motion okay with that adjustment?
And I will too, with the assistance of Paul's rework.
The secondor has to.
Now, does that make any sense?
Okay.
But, anyway, back to intent.
All right, before we vote, I'm going to have to sneeze.
Maybe not.
It feels like I gotta sneeze. I realized just before we voted that we did not open this to the public, so, let me, uh.
Were they hiding?
I, I, this is a public hearing, I, I see this public hearing. So, anybody from the public like to make a comment on this, this motion or this application? Seeing none, all right, I'm closing it to the public. Okay, now, back to the commissioners, we have a motion on the table with a second. Any other discussion, or are we ready to take a roll call? Seeing none, can we take a roll call vote on the modified motion?
Yes. Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
Mr. Wodisca?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Mr. Puntes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, passed unanimous, we are in lockstep this evening.
Oh, wow.
All right, we are through our action items. Do we have any, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the modifications from our last work session, I think the materials are really nice, and I like the, the idea of the wraparound as well, so thank you for accommodating us on that.
Yes, it's going to look nicer, I think.
Brett would like Volvo few cars.
Yeah. I have a Volvo, not a joke.
Well, you should have declared that, you're potentially.
Yeah, right.
Check with the city attorney on that.
You want to go safe, city council?
All right, well, we are letting the applicant clear their stuff, do, we have any planning commission reports?
Tim and I went to the EDC meeting, which was fairly uneventful, although Jim Snyder and Becky met with Federal Realty, sounds like they've got somebody who was in Charlottesville up here now, trying to work on filling some of those empty spots over there, so, it didn't sound like redevelopment was something that they were, they were looking at right now, or anytime soon, but they were definitely investing in Shopping Center, so that was good to hear. Did you know basketball offices and subway are closed? Gone forever?
I didn't, yesterday was March thirty-first, and we could have gotten some.
They're closed, they're empty. They're gone, like, whoa.
It's a bummer.
Overnight.
Uh, what else?
We're just heading into ice cream season, too.
The ends of Virginia, they're, they're still a guy with a restaurant idea that's.
They've submitted a site plan.
Underpart, so I don't know how far that'll get.
Staff is reviewing.
Yeah, we'll see what the staff says.
Downtown Park, looking to have the first base open on May twentieth.
Yep.
Naming process, the city will lead, planning commission will be involved.
Were involved in what pla, what?
The naming of the downtown, downtown park.
Okay.
So, we will have that to look forward to.
They started talking about lights, that's why I stopped paying attention.
And, city staff, after the bike share opens, carryout and A-N-A-M will be working on a scooter.
Policy.
Plan or policy.
That's, that's on our goals from our dance, so, everything's aligning, it's amazing.
The stars in the skies. The EDA is having.
There was talk about repaving some public parking at some point, but paving is hard, expensive, they talked about, slow progress, a big chimney spark, I mean, they got like a, a part-time guy doing twelve things, right, three-day-a-week guy?
Mm-hmm.
Because they got to get ready for city hall move, but, seems like they're getting a lot done.
And all the streets in the southwest portion of the city needs repaving desperately.
I didn't hear about, they, we didn't talk about that, but.
But, I don't know if that's the water, if I don't know if that's Fairfax Water putting new stuff in, or something, but man, it's a mess.
Any other?
EDA is having its retreat tomorrow night, which should be interesting in their future goals. The Women's March went off very nicely yesterday, except for the nasty weather, and the wind, and everything like that.
That's still weather.
But, yeah. Definitely sorry about that.
Anything else? I will have a super quick report on the campus coordinating committee. Mr. Stevens, you were not there, I, I was so disappointed, I had to hold it down all by myself.
I was in Savannah.
It's okay, I was able to handle it, I don't think I said more than four words. Basically, we heard a lot of it tonight, and just the really intricate dance that the staff and the, and the applicant, EYA, PN Hoffman, and the, and Regency, and the high school, is all coming together, like, down to the day. There is no, I was actually thinking about saying we were going to postpone this meeting as an April Fool's joke, but I didn't think anybody was willing to entertain that joke. But, yeah, it's literally, like, they're, they're going to come to an agreement on, like, the fifteenth, and then also sign the Gilbain Agreement on the same day, or something like that.
So, they start digging the day of the school.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it's so tight. And so, this meeting was just about making sure everything was in place, there's still some steps that have to go on with the city council, but largely, you know, things are in place, there's a few, like, little tiny, which we were not privy to, but some minor language issues they got to sort out, but it is a, it is tightly coordinated, and everybody's involved, and, and pushing really hard, the applicant and the city, to make this all happen precisely on the date it's supposed to happen. So, that, that's really the big update, and that's it, really, everything else is all.
Hey, so far, so good, and things are falling in the right places, but.
Yeah, no, it'd be really remarkable.
Way to jinx it, let me.
I did not, but still, you know, with the, all the road connect, I mean, just like, what a big deal this is.
It is a big deal.
I think they would leave the heat.
And that's not even proper language for it.
Okay, we are ready for the planning director's report, which is exceptionally long this week.
I, I have been adding some items as, as we go.
Disappointed, I'm sure.
I think we got under thirty words.
The, thank you, commissioners, so there is a, a job posting up for a planning position to serve as the planning commission's clerk. I think a lot of the planning staff has jumped up and really done an admirable job to get packages posted, to get materials to you all, to help me out in running the meetings, but we do need more hands on the oars, so that we can provide you all a consistent level of service, and, and the experience that, that certainly the planning commission deserves. So, that posting is up, we have received a number of compelling applications, and we'll be going through a standard recruitment process with, with phone interviews and in-person interviews, and ultimately, an offer. The hope is to bring somebody on, either by late May or early June, after we go through all those steps. Other things that I've, I've added as my list of notes to, to comment on, Carly Aubrey,
Carly Aubrey, who was here earlier tonight, has been selected as the city's employee of the year for her contributions.
I was hoping you'd mention that while she was still here.
I, yes.
Sorry about that.
Well, she knows. The, she was selected as employee of the year for her work as the, the project manager for West Falls Church, as written up in the paper. She stepped into that role when there was a need, and it was when the city was already in the midst of the RFP process, votes were coming up soon, and her ability to step into that situation and, and apply her skills obviously greatly appreciated. And I am glad that we were able to keep that position embedded in the planning department because she has drawn on the resources of every other team member to make that a success. And everyone, of course, has been very willing to volunteer their time and attention to make that possible. City Hall move dates, those have been set at least at the staff level. The expectation is that the permit counter and building safety will be moving between April 12th and April 14th, which provides about a day for packing, a day for unpacking, and then attempting to reopen the counter immediately thereafter. Obviously, the desire is to minimize the downtime for public services, but of course, make sure that it, it's a move that works so that when the counter does reopen, it is functioning. It can lead to a lot of frustration if the permit counter appears to be open, but actually there's necessary machinery that's missing in order to actually turn around the permits.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Will it then also be closed on the 24th as the last Wednesday in the month?
We can look into whether that would occur. That, it may be that there will be continuing setup, and that, that last Wednesday is something we may need. The, the planning shop is scheduled to move between April 16 and April 18, which is a week later. And so I think one of the things, as those dates get closer, and, and we're certain that those are the dates, we're probably going to be looking at whether we need to make any changes to the planning commission's agenda about whether we can accommodate package distribution with the office being closed. Which brings me to the look ahead. I think there are printed copies of the agenda at your seats tonight, and on the back is included a look ahead of what's coming up. Next week, the, the tentative, which is no longer tentative, the joint work session with the EDA and council regarding the SCE application. April 15 would be a work session on the George Mason High School site plan application, and that work session data is partially dependent on the status of the application. I know staff and the applicant are working on getting some additional information reviewed as it relates to utility, stormwater, and site infrastructure. The rest of the night would be devoted to comprehensive plan reviews. Draft housing chapter is ready for your review, environ, the natural resources chapter ready for your review, and there may be an opportunity to get a draft demographics chapter on that night as well, turn it into a comprehensive planning extravaganza. May 6 would be the scheduled action for the high school, and again, that's tentative based on the status of the application materials. It would also be the first work session on a site plan application for Columbia Baptist Church, which has come in with an expanded assembly hall to the south of the existing building, frontage along Washington Street.
The 15th is spring break. I will not be here.
You need to cancel spring break.
I could dial in if it's.
No.
You do have the opportunity to do electronic participation.
Yeah, not if we're in a room like this.
We're going to, yeah, you didn't talk about a move date for the planning commission to resume.
Never have another meeting here. This is ridiculous.
When is chamber, when do chambers open?
This is horrible.
I'll answer those questions in some order.
No opinions.
Feed them on Paul.
Yeah, so this room is, is not the preferred location. The school board room, I think, as everyone has seen, is dramatically superior for its acoustics. But again, I do want to appreciate, express my appreciation to the school board and the school facilities that have accommodated us while city hall was closed. This room is one of the two, the other being the school board room, that can accommodate the filming of the sessions. And so that's why when the school board room is not available, this becomes the room of choice. The city hall chambers, the expectation, I think, had been that that was going to open up last. Maybe there is pressure to have that open up first, and so when that, when that room becomes available.
I need to gavel. I mean, I haven't had a gavel in years.
I want a comfortable chair. I want a comfortable chair.
Anyway, I wasn't trying to criticize this room. I was saying this room is not equipped for a remote participant.
It would be difficult. I agree.
So that's all I'm saying. If we were in a different room, I could potentially.
Move to the pressure to open up the chambers as soon as possible.
Yeah. Consider the planning commission applying pressure.
Very well.
I will entertain a motion.
Maybe I'm the only one for conference break. I just want to mention that I will be not in town on the 15th.
Anybody else that we need, we have a quorum problem? I'll be around, but.
Check on that. Our school at school break week, is that week?
All right, it just, if we don't, just let.
I'll email.
Not Deborah. Don't let Deborah know. Let Paul know.
I'll email you, Paul, so you can keep track of it.
Thank you. That concludes my.
Thank you. Building for like, so long. All right. I did not, I did not. Still, okay. Correspondence, this is from the Vipis about the library. I did read that things have, the budget's gone over a little bit, a million dollars. I'm not surprised. Cost of construction has gone up everywhere, and this project is approaching a decade in the planning, so I'm making that up, but it can't be that far off. So that, they said they could de-scope some things, and they also got some money from Founders Row, so.
It's all good.
I don't know where we stand on that, but that was the correspondence. I don't know if we need to discuss that. I don't think we do. And we have no other work session items. Before I adjourn, anybody have anything they want to add? All right. Adjourned.